Nine o'clock, we're right on the nose here, okay. Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Work Session, February ninth, 2022. That wasn't me. I brought me in person or via Zoom. Item number one, Employee Service Credit Purchase. Noel Martin. Good morning, Noel. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I know this is your first time presenting, but you look like you've been here many times.
I wrote my notes down because it's my first time presenting.
Was it Saturday or Wednesday?
Saturday, yeah.
Eight years, good.
Yep, yay, longevity. All right, I'll make this short and sweet. So, a few months ago, you as a board approved our Sheriff's Department divisions to purchase years of service towards MERS defined benefit retirement with the agreement that the employee would pay 100% of the purchase. So those employees then had to request this purchase through the administration office. And then, once this request has been initiated, the individual employee purchase has to be approved by you, the Board of Commissioners, before the official purchase process can begin, and that's per MERS requirements. So we have our first employee request for purchase. Deputy Erin Palmerton has put his request in for purchase of two years of service credit. MERS has given us an estimate of the cost to be $36,588. Deputy Palmerton has agreed to pay for the full cost of this purchase as required by the board. And because of the time-sensitive nature of these estimates and the amount of paperwork that is needed to complete on the purchase, we're asking to you, to add the motion to today's meeting to approve Mr. Palmerton's purchase request. And that is the, that's it.
For today?
For today, if possible, yeah.
I didn't even know that. So right now?
Yeah.
Okay, does, all the commissioners understand that what we did this, there's no cost to the county. He's buying his time. We have to authorize it. So I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, can anything add on this?
Um, Jody, Noel, um... In the future, after he retires?
There's no obligation from the county. Uh, he is under the MERS defined benefit plan, so he's under, he can retire at age 50 with 25 years of service. So he is, would be under our, the lingo of MERS, but he's under our O2 division, which is our regular... Correct, yeah. He is under the, the old defined benefit. And, and just as a reminder, we have defined benefit for all of our Sheriff's Department and jail employees.
There's no cost to the county except we gotta do some paperwork.
Essentially, yes, yep. Long-term?
What about the loan on the payment system for the defined benefit to people?
Uh, so essentially, what this would do is it will, it would fast-forward time for him towards his, when he retires and gets his estimate of what he would, his monthly pension check. Essentially, all that it's gonna do is fast-forward that time, two years for him, so it will add a little bit of cushion of money. But as far as the actual cost of it, it would only, if he worked two years for us, it would just be the exact same as if he were to purchase two years. Now, the actual money itself, how much it's gonna increase, it wouldn't really be much because it's just a, it's an over, it's an estimate of overall of the time that he would actually be collecting of his retirement check. So it really doesn't increase anything. It would increase it in the long run, very, very minimal, but it's not going to affect our, our unfunded liability amount, if that's what you're wondering. Yeah, yeah, it's not gonna affect that at all.
David? Hey, do you gentlemen want to, because it's our board policy to wait two weeks, but in this particular case, it's time-sensitive? Correct?
Correct.
Oh, with, plus any other commissioners, do you want, want me to put that on the agenda?
I'd like to draft a motion as well. That is ready, Julie has that for you.
Okay, with it, okay. All right, anything else as far as the employee service credit? Okay, item two, Class A Claims and Accounts. Thank you, Noel. I believe you've got some information there from Jody in regards to our County Roscommon Accounts Payable Policy. Everybody got that? Okay, go ahead, Jody.
So, it's been brought to my attention that we may be able to process and streamline the accounts payable processes a little bit better than we currently do. And in reviewing that, I spoke with a couple of employees and then reached out to our long-term auditor in regards to how this must look, because my big thing was, I don't want there to have been a policy, procedure, or resolution that was passed in 1923 that we somehow are negating as things can't happen. So the suggestion from Jimmy Anderson was that we create a new accounts payable policy and review that. The big changes are simply the days. So currently, right now, we have four, a month, we have four Class As, which are essentially bills that would or should essentially be bills that accrue interest or need some sort of immediate payment, or payments through trust and agency type of accounts, or payments to state, federal, local governments. And on the second Wednesday of every month, we also have a Claims and Accounts. It's confusing to even a lot of people that have been here, they tend to forget what goes where and what the timetable is. So the overall change that this policy puts into place is that all bills would be payable on Wednesdays instead of Thursdays. The bills would be due into accounts payable no later than 4:00 PM the Monday of the week of payment. And there would not be a Class A bill on the week that there's Claims and Accounts. So you just have one accounts payable run every week, essentially. The other thing that the policy does is firm up practices that we already do. Original invoices with correct Fund Department accounting codes must be submitted, ensure that the payment is authorized, unauthorized expenditure, and in accordance with terms, agreements, not a duplicate, et cetera. Department heads must submit for new vendors, a IRS Form W-9 that proves their taxpayer identification number. It also shores up just the cover sheet that is needed with the Claims and Accounts, along with the vendor invoice and pertinent information, and gives a very specific list to help people remember what Class As are for. Maintenance service contracts, membership dues, conference training registration, trust and agency payments, payments to federal, state, or local government, and payments that may incur late fees of pay after 30 days. Those would be like a Consumers Energy bill, or like a credit card type of invoice would fall under that as well. It also reminds them that they can be approved with the Administrator Controller or the County Treasurer in absence of the Administrator Controller if they feel that they are an immediate bill that can't wait till Claims and Accounts. Lets them know that, hey, if you submit a bill that clearly doesn't fit in the above and hasn't been approved, it's gonna be turned back to you to be processed for Claims and Accounts, and then shores up just the process of Board of, Board Approval, basically, of all bills, so. And review. So that's it. So I would be asking you guys to review that and then potentially pass that on the next board meeting, and I would say the beginning of March, March 1st, to put it into effect. And we'll just make sure when we do the motion, it rescinds and replaces any and all others in the last 150 years.
Hey, any questions from any commissioners in regards to the Accounts Payable Policy? Other than moving a couple of dates and times and general cleanup, correct?
Yes.
So basically, you're paying the Class As, like, every week if they come in?
Correct.
Come in, just paying for that week, and then, and not gonna be carried over like we currently do?
Correct.
Anything? David? Hey, all right. We'll move that forward at the next meeting, okay? Item three, County Jail Nursing Staff Proposal. We've got a, Jody's provided you with some information in front of you on regards to that, and so, Jody, you want to present that, please?
Absolutely. As you know, and we have discussed in the last year, the workload for the nursing services within the Roscommon County Jail, specifically related to COVID-19, daily testing of all inmates, testing for all employees, foreclosed contacts of employees, other local agencies, it has drastically increased the workload, so much to the fact that we also have our correction staff actually doing testing as well. There's trained people on each staff. The contract that we have in place for our registered nursing service is for 30 hours per week. We did have, Sheriff and I did have our registered nurse track her hours for a period of three months, just to see where we were, and workloads increased to about 45 hours per week, so about 15 more than what we've contracted for based on, you know, hourly rates, et cetera. So essentially, what I'm asking for is the Board of Commissioners to approve an allocation from the American Rescue Plan Funds that have been set aside for the county for roughly, a little bit of roundup. If we looked at doing, you know, $26,000 or $30,000 for a cushion, preferably $30,000 for additional jail nursing services from the 129, 181 that we still have left and available.
Okay, that's, that's not a permanent position, though.
Well, it's not a county position at all. This would be money that would be put towards that jail contract for her to hire an additional staff to oversee. So we won't accrue payroll retirement benefits. This isn't a county position. And for right now, this would be a one-time shot, and then we, you know, in a year, we'd probably have to look at it again, depending on where we are with COVID.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to know, because those funds are not gonna be there forever, so. But the funds are there to use for this, so that's fine. All right, I just, that's what I wanted to know. It isn't gonna go on for 10 years.
The proposal for the motion would just be the $30,000 right now for those services, and then, well, it'll have to be something you review next year.
Correct, gotcha. All right, answers my question. Can any other questions in regards to that? David?
No.
Yeah?
Nope.
Hey, we'll put that on for motion for next meeting also, okay? All right, item number four is reappointment of Al Cambridge to the Health Department, L, N, LCMH. His letter is contained in the, our next meeting packet, so if you wanted to put it in there. So it is, it is item L under our next meeting. So he has put his letter in. Basically, the way we handle that is, as is presented today, I think all of you know Al Cambridge, and he's been on that committee for years, doing a good job. But at this point, I would entertain that we put that on for motion next meeting also, correct?
Sounds good to me.
All right, Ken? Ken? Okay? Okay, moving right along. Notice we're moving right along, Sherry and Tom. Roscommon County United Way. Roscommon County United Way, ARP update.
I have, I wanna thank you all for letting us come in this morning. Couple of things, how many of you, by a show of hands in the audience, how many of you know about 211? Good. Friday is 211 Day. It is something that has been very important to our community for a very long time. And just to tell you, to improve lives by harnessing the caring power of our community, that's what United Way does. And United Way is the main funder across the country, is available throughout the state. If you were visiting someone in Detroit, and I've done this with my kids before, with the neighbor that was looking for some help, I said, well, let me show you what you do. We picked up the phone and we called 211. Now, we have a little something that we'd like to share with you, it'll take a few minutes, but please listen, this is a video that talks about what we do, and I say we, all of us who fund it, all of us who call, what happens when they call 211. You will hear real operators and real people who are calling in. And I hate, I hate technology, I hate it.
I like it. I just like it when it works.
Yes, I have this love-hate relationship with it. I love it when it works and I hate it when it doesn't. It is going, it's not showing up on the screen, is what's happening.
While we're waiting, that coffee's taking its sweet old time over there.
I don't go over and refill everybody's coffee cup. Dave's like I am, no coffee. Didn't mean to do that. Okay. That can work? While they're, while they're working on that, I do have, I do have some posters here for anybody that takes them back. We have the tear-off pads. These are really nice, Sheriff's Department, your offices, people come in often, township offices, we give out these out and they can say, you know, we can't help you directly here, but we know that if you call there, they'll give you resources to 211, so we have those available. Is that working?
It, it will work in just a second. He's gonna mute the county. All right.
... that they did in the state of California to talk about it, and this was the short version that they gave us to use to let people know what's going on. In our world, this last year, in 2021, we had 1,224 connections. Eight percent of those were receiving SNAP, or as we call it, food stamps. Seven percent had disabilities, were in SSI. Three percent were veterans, shame on us. Eighteen percent were over 60, which is not surprising, and given the demographics of our country, or our county, and 25% of those were related to COVID-19. The top three things people asked for. Utility assistance. I can't pay my electric bill. I can't do my gas. I'm out of propane. The second thing this last year, and this isn't too surprising, are COVID-related things. Where can I get a test? Where can I go to get masks? These types, these types of things. The third thing was about housing and shelter. That's why we decided that we were going to work with those, two of those top three things, housing and shelter. The ALIS Project. ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. Those of us in this room that are older, seasoned, will remember hearing the word "the working poor." ALIS is a way of defining and understanding the struggles of households that earn above the federal poverty level, but not enough to afford a bare-bones budget. Their financial situation is very precarious, from one paycheck to the next, and the pandemic has hit this population very, very hard. In Roscommon County, 11,139 households, you've probably heard that before. Fifteen percent of them are below the poverty level. Twenty-nine percent of them are ALIS. These are what we're focusing on. And 56% of us, thank God, are above ALIS. What we came up with, using what we heard for the calls in 211, the ALIS population, we came up with two things that we're using the American Recovery Funds for, to help this ALIS population, and that's helping ALIS utility assistance and helping ALIS foreclosure assistance. Now, Tom and I did a lot of research and a lot of asking questions and looking into things, hearing what other people that have grants, I have a lot of experience with grants, starting programs and so forth. The big thing, two things that makes a program successful, the outreach and the ease of how you get through the process. Now, I gave each one of you one of these, okay? There's two of them there, one for utility and one for the foreclosure assistance. Use them any way you'd like to. Our biggest thing is, of course, 211, and that's when, if they call, I say, the easiest way is call 211. When people ask you for help, ask, push them towards 211, they will do it. We're very proud now that when they call 211, those operators can say, in Roscommon County, there is a Helping ALIS Project, and to go through it. We've also worked with the collaborative, there's about 80 members in that collaborative, it's a nonprofit collaborative, Tim's part of it, and he knows, I talk about this all the time. We've, there's about 80 members, they serve Roscommon. It could be a wider circle, they may be in Ogama County or Crawford County, but serve Roscommon people. Did social media, churches, banks, credit unions, the chambers of Congress, DTE, the libraries, the township offices, the food pantry, we have care bags there, and we have great posters in front of the food, and people who are going to get in food are likely to be our, our target audience. And we've gone on with those, and we've established a wonderful relationship with Consumers Energy, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Okay, the other thing that we talked about is the ease of the application, and we're gonna show you just how easy it is to get into this application. And Tom's gonna talk about that, because he's the guy who talks to these people and helps them fill out their applications. You're going to want to go to United Way, rosscommoncountyunitedway.org. And then you're going to go to that middle tab where it says "Get Help." There's a dropdown there, and it says "Helping ALIS."
I'm going to take over briefly in the communication, and I promise to keep it going. But just a quick side note. The first dropdown you see is the ARPA Nonprofit Sustainability Fund that the company also awarded us funds to oversee and to begin. But if you click on the Helping ALIS link right on the website, it takes you right to the application portal. For the ease of speed, I have already created an account. You see up here in the corner, I am now Tom Test. "I need assistance with utilities." You click on that, and it takes you to this next page where you can submit a new application, view your existing applications. I'm just going to click on "New Application," and it says, "Oh, look, you've got one in progress already." I'm clicking "Continue to Edit." The first page of the application, as plain as we can have it, it states the requirements for eligibility. Right there, a household with one person needs to meet 80% of the AMI, which is 36,000. Point blank. If you earn more than that with only one person in your household, you know you don't qualify. It also states a list of what we're going to expect as far as criteria. A lot of organizations and help require you to have an SCR approval letter. That's the, no, approval letter. A lot of places require you to have the approval letter, meaning you qualify for DHHS assistance. We are requesting a denial letter, which means there are the people that make too much money to get that other assistance. So we are their main hope at this point. But you click on "Next," and it see, you see that the application process, personal information is already there. I want to stress for just a minute that this is a very secure process. It has, each time you enter any information, it has four different layers of security that has to go through. So if anyone, I'm not saying it's infallible, infallible, but if anyone wanted to get information off this page, for example, down here where it says, "Upload your personal documents." If anyone wanted to get that information, the sun, the moon, the stars, all the planets would have to be in alignment. They couldn't just get it with, say, one, one-fourth of the information. They'd have to have all the layers of security in order to infiltrate. The nice thing about this application is each time you click "Next," it automatically saves what you put in there. So if you realize you're time constrained and you can't finish the application, you can come back to it later. As soon as you hit the "Submit" button at the end of the process, in real time, Sheri and I get an email notification that there is a new application needing a review. We can go into the application and review it. And let's say they did not upload their driver's license. Right in this program, we can respond with a note saying, "Thank you for applying for assistance. My name is Tom. I'm here to assist. It appears as though you did not upload your driver's license. Please do so. Looks like everything else is in line." I hit "Close." It gets sent to this portal and to their email saying you have a note that needs to be addressed. It is very simple, like Sheri indicated. Ease of access and outreach. And that, that is the portal. I wanted to stress the safety of it, the ease of it. You saw me maneuver through it. And the security of it. We had this portal designed by a computer company, AllPro Technology, and it went live the end of January. Now, the other, the other aspect is, what happens once they get approved? Once they get approved, we have, say it's a Consumers Energy assistance. We have access to Consumer Energy's portal. And as soon as we get the individual's application for assistance, we can put an eligibility hold on their account through Consumers Energy, which immediately buys 30 days for them to get all of their information to us, for us to make sure they qualify, and then to pay their utility bill. I am going to do one more screen share so Sheri can finish the presentation.
The other thing we want to remember is we do have foreclosure assistance also. It's a little more complicated, not the applications, the processes and our approval. That's foreclosure for homeowners through banks and/or the tax, the property tax. And what we've received in applications, most of them have been for helping with property tax. It's not a move on our part. We're getting the money, supports the county, and, and they get to keep their home. And we have a good community, a thriving community. Consumers Energy. Now, I know that it's a bit self-serving for them to say, "Yes, we'll help you," because they're going to get their arrears paid. But when we started working with them, one of the things is, is these young women that we work with have access to a computer that shows it in real time at that point in time. How many people are behind in their bill? And the day we, the first time we talked to them, they could only get it for the state of Michigan. Anybody got any ideas what that number is? 648,000 that day. 648,000. That's a lot of people in the, that are having trouble paying. As we went on, we wanted to know, of course, about Ross Common County. As Tom said, we tried with 648,000. We need a lot more money than what we have. They've told us in Ross Common County, there's 1,306 households that, and remember, it can change on any day, but at that point in time, a total of $338,195 owed to them. It is mind-boggling. I, you know, I tried to think this through. Now, they've offered us, I think, something that's really going to help make this program a little more successful. She said, "We could do marketing for you." We spent about a half an hour on the phone with them yesterday. They are going to contact for us directly homeowners, and that's just the homeowners, that household up there. That's just homeowner households that are in arrears. It's not the rental people. It's our homeowners. And they're going to contact them directly, about 800 of them, through email. And also, they're designing a, using our little things that we have. They're going to use that, and they're also going to do direct mail, postcards to them, to help them know that this assistance is available. Will everybody be eligible? No. There's going to be some that make too much money or something else that might throw them out of eligibility, but that's the most common thing. But it is something that, that we can help. I think it's something, I'm very proud of the fact that this county, I want to thank Jody and Tim and Bob and Dave and Mark and Ken for what you've done, because I put this on 211. We've been working with 211 to get it, you know, get it in their system. So the minute our portal went live and everything was available, they could drop it. So the next call, if it was from Ross Common, they could say, "Well, you need to do this." The next time the 211 database people came together in the state of Michigan, Shirley Southworth said, "We have new money for people in Ross Common County. It's called Helping ALIS," and she explained it. The same day, I got two emails saying, "Where did the money come from? How does the program work?" Bay County United Way wanted to know how we did it. And actually, one of the 211s in southern Michigan wanted to know about it down by Grand Rapids there. So we've done a good thing. We've done a good thing. This is helping people. This is the American Recovery Act. And I think that's what we need to make happen.
And when she says, "We've done a good thing," it's inclusively Ross Common County, because it was your job as commissioners to allocate the funds. And we thank you for that. Any questions, concerns?
What about people that don't have internet, don't have a computer? Need assistance. If they need the help, but they need assistance accessing your portal, and they come into an office someplace and sit down with you, who can look for them?
We can, we can in fact do the application for them, in front of them, yes. Again, the quickest way is doing it online. First line of defense is 211. Talking from experience, I, I know that if there are seniors out there that need assistance with the application, they can call the Commissioner on Aging, who has a resource coordinator who will sit down and navigate the application process. Again, they get that from calling 211. The same with Veterans Affairs. If there's a veteran, then perhaps Veteran Affairs can help it. But yes, we will be making appointments. Being as though we have such a small office, we will be utilizing other locations, such as the library, the centers, to help individuals that are otherwise internet-challenged. Yes.
And thank you for going to our Veterans Office. I'll save some of our funding.
Can I have five veterans in my family? All four of my sons and my husband serve, so I will always reach out to veterans.
I think a bigger point is, is that, and I commend you on this, is that you're getting out to COA and veterans and so forth. Ken's right, there are a few people out there that don't have internet, but that at the same time, we've got our libraries. We've got access for them. So I'm happy that you are covering this, whether it's COA or whether, whether it's veterans or whether it's, I mean, 211 will get them. If they contact you, they will hook them up somehow with somebody.
Yes.
And actually physically help them.
And we all, we're all playing on this same playground. Again, I say it, I've said it for years, we need to play nice with one another. So it's a community helping the community.
Great.
We have these for anybody that would like to take a few, you know, maybe you want to hand them out at an organization that you weren't with, or you would like to put them out. We're more than happy. I'm taking some down to the Treasurer's Office when we're done here. And we're trying to get a partnership with the Treasurer's Office.
Are you taking them to the townships?
We've sent them to the townships. We've been to the townships.
The townships already have them. They got an email version, but then they also got hard copies mailed to them specifically.
All right.
I also have these, if anybody wants them in their office.
I'll take one.
They're, they're always available. If ever need more stuff, I can.
And I truly, truly tried to keep her moving, just.
Okay. Jim, any questions? David?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, item number six. Career Tech Program update and new CTE director. And this is Natalie Davis. Natalie's going to be online with us today. And Tom is here in person, but Tom's just going to sit here and watch. Am I correct?
Correct. You want to come up to the front table?
Oh, I'll come to the front table if you'd like, but I'm going to be quiet.
All right. Okay.
I just do what I'm told.
Okay.
And Natalie's going to do a wonderful job. I've got her doing some evaluation training online.
She's doing some evaluation training online, so that's why she's doing it remotely. She's got an eight-hour training she has to sit in on after this is done, so.
Okay. All right, Natalie?
Good morning. Can you see me?
I see you. We see you, and we can hear you. You've got a presentation up on the screen.
Great.
Can you make it full-size? Can you go into view format?
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to bring up my presentation. No, I did the wrong thing.
Go, go under File, or I'm excuse me, go under View.
I'm trying to.
On the top bar, go under View, and then.
I can't even see my view now. Okay. Oh, dear. I had it up, and then I went back to get my presentation. Hold on. Sorry about that. Gosh, I keep trying to find the right box, and it's not letting me. All right, I'm sorry, you guys. I cannot get it to go. I'm sorry. I do not know why it's not working for me. I'm screen sharing.
Natalie, you can't see the bar. You can't see your bar with File, Edit, View, Insert. You can't see that?
No, I can only see "Mute, Stop Video, Participants Chat, New Share." I can't even see the View button anymore.
I will explain as you go. Oh, for time reasons, go ahead and begin.
See the slideshow?
Yes, that's what I wanted right there. You got it, go ahead.
I got it, okay. So first of all, thank you to your United Way folks. As Sean knows, I was the United Way Director for over 10 years in Gaylord. We were just launching the 211. So they're right in that it does take a village, which is exactly why Sean and I wanted to share what is going on today, because we all work together. And without community and collaboration, none of us. Um, because we all work together, and without community and collaboration, none of us can do what we do. Um, so first of all, as Sean said, I'm Natalie Davis. I was hired as the CTE Director for CORE back in August. And primarily, uh, one of my biggest exciting things that we have going on is that prior to hiring me, we received two-point-five million dollars from the state of Michigan in a line item budget that we didn't even have to compete for in a grant or anything, uh, to build CTE programming right here in Roscommon. We are currently housed in Roscommon Middle School in a partnership that we have with them. So we are right in your backyard, just down the road. Um, so we wanted to make sure that we involved all of our school districts in our twenty-six-hundred-square-mile radius that we cover and service for CORE. And each district was invited to identify two representatives to help guide our planning and development of our programming. Again, it'll be housed right in Roscommon at the middle school. So we started our steering committee back in October, really with the end game of identifying what programming we would add for this fall and kind of establishing a direction for where we would go and how we could best utilize these funds and also leverage those to basically give us the most bang for our buck for the community and the students and families we serve. So the first thing we did is start diving into the data. And so I think this aligns really nicely with the presentation that you just heard because we really looked at where the employment needs are. We want to be able to sustain a livelihood and income for our students and keep them in northern Michigan, keep them close to our families. And so we looked at Michigan Works data as well as other regional data to see what the employment needs were, are, for our communities. And also, uh, because we had all of our communities represented, we really looked to identify programs that align with what we need up here in northern Michigan and not necessarily the rest of the country, but, you know, looking at Michigan data and our specific regional data. So if we look at, uh, and I'm not going to go through all the details on this. Um, I will share this with you, and you can, you know, I, I, you're more, I'm more than happy to share anything I have in the presentation. We do share our sources, but basically, this team of a steering committee of all communities represented, looked at data specific to Roscommon County and our community as well as all the other communities. And you can see from this pie chart, uh, a lot of our, our needs and priorities based on our region. So again, I'll share this specific data. I won't belabor you with going through every line item. Um, but we know that healthcare is always big. We know that hospitality and retail are big for northern Michigan, um, which doesn't always lead to high wage, high demand opportunities for our students. So what might they be able to do? Um, within this, we also, because we cover a large regional area, we covered, we looked at data from all communities, and so. Hold on, I'm going to plug in. It's right here. Um, and so we looked at Ochumaw County. Ochumaw and Roscommon were broken out by specific county. And we tried to look at similarities. Again, healthcare was big for all of them. And then we looked at, for the other communities we serve, we were able to identify data, but it was more of a consortium. And so what we did is look at all of this data, and every single community member, I'm sharing my resources. Again, I'll share this PowerPoint with you later. Uh, we, every steering committee member who came to our meetings, again, we met every two weeks, beginning in August through December. Every person received a stack of basically data and research that we had done based on all the economic data we could find through Michigan Works and the state of Michigan and hot jobs and all of those other sources. And we tried to compile that data and then prioritize. And so we had our committee broken up into groups, and we identified some areas based on high wage, high demand, but also that aligned with our economic data. The table you're seeing on the screen is what was the end result of our teams. So actually, the only one on this page that was not identified as, as something we thought was feasible for our students was HVAC. All of the other ones on this page, um, were identified by our team as something we wanted to explore, adding programs for our students. And so you can see culinary arts, hospitality, that's big for our area. Um, and then teaching, business IT, manufacturing, and forestry and agri-science. Uh, the remaining chart, I should have bumped this up, uh, construction was the other one. Uh, and then the others were mentioned, but knowing that we can't be all things to all people, and we needed to prioritize, um, we decided to prioritize on those areas in orange. So basically, this page in addition to construction. We also wanted to take into account what students were interested in. It does no good for us to add amazing programs if we don't have students to enroll. And so we created a Google form, and we had all of our districts share this form with students and had them tell us basically what they would be interested in. And we put it in their language, like, "Oh, yes, I'd love to take this course," or, "Okay, maybe if my friends are taking it." We tried to make it real for them and keep it in their language. Um, one of the things I should, I should interject here is, you may or may not be aware of our current offerings. We do offer public safety, medical occupations, cosmetology, and our autos program right there in Roscommon. Again, housed in the middle school. We offer welding currently as a core program, but in Houghton Lake High School. And we also offer recreational engines over in Mayo, still a core program, but located in Mayo. So for the fall of this year, 2022, we are looking at adding a marketing class, a business, um, kind of entrepreneurship, IT kind of class, education general, which is basically teaching, and then add a section of recreational engines in Roscommon. We also are looking to add further programming in the fall of 2023. Currently, Grayling is offering a construction program, and they are willing to relocate that to CORE so that we can offer that in Roscommon. We would add a manufacturing pathway and move our welding program from Houghton Lake to Roscommon. We would be building on Roscommon Middle School additional shop space so that we could house these programs, as well as a new auto shop, fully equipped, add a hospitality program, and forestry and agri-science. So again, all of these new programs would align with employment opportunities for our students. We would work with area business partners. They would be earning college credit while they're working on these, and I think really help open up some opportunities for students. Um, this is what our program schedule could look like next year. We're still debating, we may stick with only offering our AM schedule, but we're going to put our opportunities out there during the scheduling process right now in high schools and see how it lines up. Um, we will continue to offer AM programming, possibly add some PM programming for next year, expanding our health pathway that we have currently offered, and just kind of see how it goes based on demand. This is just our very rough schedule. Um, so I know that was a lot of information, uh, in a short period of time. Um, what, a couple other things that I would like to add, this is a presentation that I've shared at Rotary Club, and I've shared at our local school, school board meetings, just to make sure people are informed and, and aware of what we're doing. Uh, we are always looking for new business partnerships. One of the really exciting things for me, uh, I'm from northern Michigan. I've lived here over thirty years. Um, but I, I did work downstate for the last twelve, so I'm really feeling blessed to be able to come back home and help bring some of these exciting opportunities for our students. Uh, one of the things that I was most impressed with when I started work at CORE, and, and you all need to know this because it's such an important piece, our students are learning, earning direct college credit at no cost to them while they're in high school as a result of our programming. And so we're giving kids skills, career and employability, uh, skills and valuable college credits that they can take with them wherever they go in life. And so, uh, teaching them to fish, basically, but really excited about helping these students develop these skills to help the rest of their lives and help them be successful, hopefully remaining here in northern Michigan. So, any questions?
Great. Any questions of either Natalie or Tom at this time? Ken?
Well, I, I just suggest that you move your, uh, childcare program up higher on the list because might not, might not necessarily be the people in the middle school that are looking for this career tech that, that, that need childcare in order to work. But it's, it's an area of, of our county that our other workers aren't able to, uh, obtain employment because they can't get reliable, uh, childcare, reliable, affordable childcare.
That can be aligned with the teaching program. When I was at Tuscaloosa, we actually had lines. But as far as, we would use that credential, working those programs while they're going to teach. That's something we're exploring.
That's definitely a need.
I'll, I'll agree with Ken on the childcare because I'm a hundred percent convinced that if, the way to get people educated is, is going to be, key is going to be childcare. And when I say childcare, affordable childcare.
That's the key right there.
That's the key right there, so.
My wife and I raised six children. She had to stay at home because there was no way we were going to afford six children in daycare. I understand that completely.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, David?
Oh, thank you.
Jim? Nope. Alright, Natalie, thank you for your presentation. Tom, thank you. Keep us in the loop. I guess it was kind of good that you followed United Way because they kind of tailed, untailed to each other, so.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you.
All about community. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, we are past ten o'clock, so, uh, can we be back here at ten fifteen, everyone?
They have to do a motion up.
Oh, they got, that's, we're in the process of getting that done, and Noel's probably already got it done. Okay, thank you. Got it? Okay. Good morning. Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, February ninth, 2022. Ten o'clock AM, hybrid meeting, assessment in person or via Zoom. Everyone, please stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Mr. Melvin, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, roll call, roll call of board members, please. Here.
Melvin. Snyder.
Here.
Alvin.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Okay. Item number four, approval of the agenda, um, with the addition of a motion number two in regards to the service credit.
I'll make that motion and place it in the.
I'll second that. Motion. Good one, Ken. Motion was made by Commissioner Melvin, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda with the addition of motion number two. Any further comment from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number five, approval of the minutes for meetings on January twelfth, 2022, and January twenty-sixth, 2022. Organizational meeting of January fourth, 2022, and a special meeting on February fourth um, in regards to the lake assessment. Motion, motion and a second to approve those, please.
Yeah, motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to approve the minutes for the aforementioned four meetings. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Okay, on to item number six, Class A Claims and Accounts, please.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of two million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Commissioner Melvin, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve Class As in the amount of two million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty cents. Any further comments from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Okay, Claims and Accounts, please.
Move to approve Claims and Accounts in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to approve Claims and Accounts in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. Any further comments or questions from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah. Thank you, Michelle. Item seven, uh, public comment, agenda items only. Have any public comment at this time? Right, thank you. Moving on to Administrator Controller Report number eight.
Good morning, everyone. Um, we do actually have one update in our current lawsuits. Um, quick review, we have the Courage versus Roscommon County Treasurer, which goes in March. Um, Mock versus Roscommon County at all, which there's no change in the current status. POM Sheriff's Arbitration is scheduled for the end of March. The opiate suit, no change in status. Um, we do have the Chill versus Roscommon County, uh, Court of Appeals. Oral arguments are March ninth. Um, and that is in Lansing, so just to give you that information as well. Um, Legislative Update, House Bill forty-seven twenty-five, um, which is the one we've discussed for the last six months that expands binding arbitration beyond, uh, police and fire labor bargaining units to corrections officers as well, is in legislation, moving slowly forward. It is right before the Senate Economic and Small Business Development Committee. And when it moves out of that, will move into the Senate for approval. Um, about nineteen minutes ago, Governor Whitmer sort of presenting her budget with supplemental expenditures. Um, this is actually live feed. It's just not something we can see because we're in the meeting right now. So that was a link eligible to county governments to see. Additionally, um, there's still a lot of movement and continued discussion on two variations of bills that change the current structure of the mental health service delivery in Michigan for those eligible populations. Um, kind of a, kind of an interesting industry tweaks going, trying to go from a public to private, basically, oversight. I have scheduled the lake level control structures inspection, so those are due for 2022. Um, we will use the, uh, current firm that is on the list of authorized inspectors through the state of Michigan that we've used the last three times as well. I did have a meeting last night with Mary Frye, our COA, uh, Director. And, uh, we just discussed kind of their, their current reporting relationship with us and where they're at with mileage and monetary amounts and the process of, uh, what that looks like for a renewal and a potential increase as well. I have been working with the Sheriff Administration to identify some expenditures and potential needs that would be eligible under reimbursement for a FEMA-sponsored jail grant that's being run through MVHHS. Of course, these things are, uh, very inmate COVID-specific. So we'll have to see where we're at and what we can do with those as well. One of the areas we're going to look at is for the testing that's done by corrections officers of inmates that time to see if that overtime can get reimbursed to us as well. I attended a virtual meeting and drug under Sheriff Low in with me because he knows more than I do, um, with the other county administrators that participate in Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Group. Um, it was a call through Grand Traverse for a review of the current services provided and the ability of our central Michigan, of our mental health facility to meet the needs of our community. Um, there were some concerns with jails specifically and worry, wording in the agreement that was passed thirty-two years ago. So we may be moving, uh, moving that to the Boards of Commissioners to look at, uh, re-clarifying some of those areas. I also met with Julie Darden, um, MSUE Regional Director, to review some of the current contracted services we have. Um, how are they working? What can be done better? Is there anything else that MSUE can do for the county currently? Um, and then just explore some ideas for some potential improvements to the processes we currently have with those services. If you haven't stopped in, um, the wall was finished. Recycling and soil conservation is just about fully relocated to their new offices on the other side of housing. So just take a peek, um, kind of a neat little space that we have for them as well. I did Saturday, along with Commissioner Melvin and our former Director of Facilities and Maintenance, Nick Johnson, um, hold interviews and give tours for candidates for the Director of Facilities and Maintenance. I did extend an offer to a gentleman, um, and am meeting with him on Thursday to finalize. Uh, he is available to start like that, as long as fingerprinting, um, and background check come back fine. He's already gone for the drug testing and has passed successfully. Uh, Julie made it through the first year of ten ninety-nines for her, um, and did extremely well. I'm very proud of her. Thank you. Um, so those. Um, so those have all been mailed as they needed to be. Um, we did host a Northern Michigan Commissioners Association on Monday, which I'm sure Chairman Schneider will touch on. Um, it was actually quite an interesting, quite an interesting meeting. Um, I attended the RCTA meeting and um emailed the audit to all of the commissioners for you to review as well because they are also going to be needing a mileage, so good to know where everybody's finances standards. Those are being brought to your attention for that. Um, finally, it was brought to my attention by the court side that there may be a discrepancy in the wage and compensation policy in regards to a six-month increase, something they don't do that we do that I will need to bring to your attention for some final final redeterminations on, so that's it.
Hey. Any commissioner have any questions of Jody and Jody's report, please? Covered quite a lot in a short time. Um, thank you. So. Okay. Item under correspondence, that's quite lengthy too, so bear with me here, all right? Maybe a little help here, guys. Item A is uh Eagle, Roscommon County. It's a SWMPA Plan Amendment Letter from them. Um. Item B is a MAC Legislative Conference Update, or excuse me, that's their conference which we held in March. Uh. I believe Julie has checked with everybody and I don't, I don't think there's any interest from commissioners of going down to that this year. So. Um. There's a little time to change your mind. Item C is a MAC Legislative Update. Item D is Richard Castle, uh Consumers Power, his application, which was forwarded us from the EDC Board. Um, Rich has been in front of us a number of times, uh and he's also very active and have been attending our our last, I believe, two or three EDC meetings, so we'll be looking to put that on for a motion for approval to him to the EDC Board. Uh, there's a thank you from Kim Morley uh who's running for the I'll take this back, I think it's the hundred and third, no, the hundred and fifth, the hundred and fifth, new hundred and fifth district as a representative. Item F is the Roscommon Townships Association, January Minutes. Uh, that meeting was held at uh was very interesting because it was held at uh a small township, one of the smaller townships, but they did a fantastic job of hosting it. Item G is Marquette County Ballot Protection Resolution Copy. H, MAC House Bill forty-seven twenty-five binding arbitration information. I is NACO Treasury or yeah Treasury Recovery Fund Projects. NACO, again, they're uh January twenty-fourth coronavirus pandemic resources for counties. Item K was a MAC Alert, Grant a MAC Alert, a Grant Alert. And LL, NLCMA, I read that. Was that a reappoint, that was a reappointment letter for um L. Cambridge, correct? Okay, good. Item M is a Leon, Leon County Resolution that they passed, and item N is uh notification from Consumers Energy in regard to tree changes. Any questions from any correspond, uh correspondence from any commissioner at this time? Nobody? Okay. Under Monthly Report, we've got the Animal Control Animal Shelter Report for twenty, for twenty twenty-one, or no, December of twenty twenty-one. MSU Extension February Programs and the Sheriff's Department Monthly Report. Any questions in regards to monthly department reports? Okay. Item eleven, any visitors that'd like to be acknowledged at this time? Okay, on to twelve, unfinished new business. Oak Lake Special Assessment District. David and Ken, you got anything else to add since we had our meeting on Friday?
I don't have anything at this point. Next board meeting. My correct, yeah. That's what we discussed.
Well, the only thing I want to discuss is, is that you want, do you want a full board on this? The rest, do you want a full board on this, or do you want, you just want to present it to the four because David's not gonna be here?
Moving along if that's what David still wants to do.
Yeah.
He wants to move along in his answer.
Yeah, we need to move this along.
It was the first step. I agree. It's just the first step to get this thing moving, so.
I have no problem with that.
You gentlemen are all in agreement with that. We can leave it to the other four, or I guess, I guess we'll leave it to the other three at this point with the other fourth guy coming back, so. Okay? Nothing else to discuss? Okay? Uh, EDC Application and Letter of Interest, is that in regards to Mr. Castle again? I believe it is. It is because I don't want to go all the way through this thing of sixty-six pages to find that. Okay. Huh? I've already seen it. No, because I just wanted to know if this, this just happens to be in here twice, that's fine. Okay, item C, Remonumentation Grant Administrator Appointment, so um at this point we need to uh reappoint a new remonumentation grant administrator, and we've got um we have reached out to Equalization Department and they have stepped up and be able to take this on. We got with um we got with Marv Myers and everything seems to be in order at this point, but we're looking at putting Allison, what's Allison's last name, I guess? What's it? Thompson, Allison Thompson in charge of Remonumentation Grant Administrator Appointment, so we would need to put that on if there's any more discussion, but I'd like to put that on to the next meeting also and get her name to that position. And there will be there is monies tied to that, and it's always set by the state every year, but it's it's a little over three thousand dollars a year for that position, so. Um. I can't give you an exact figure on that because it does change, so. Anyone else have any questions in regards to that? Appointment? Okay, I'll bring that forward at the next meeting for a motion also. Okay. Item number three. Motion, or excuse me, anybody else have any unfinished new business? Okay, number thirteen, motions and resolutions. Michelle, you are up, please.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash zero one Local Governing Body Resolution for Charitable Gaming Licenses for the purpose of recognizing the Sky High Booster Club, Roscommon County, as a nonprofit organization for charitable gaming purposes. Local Governing Body Resolution for Charitable Gaming Licenses. Whereas, Sky High Booster Club, Roscommon County, has requested the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners recognize the organization operating in the county of Roscommon, county of Roscommon, Michigan. And whereas, the request for recognition is for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license to allow for fundraising in support of youth gymnastics, dance, cheer, and competitive gymnastics within the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the request from Sky High Booster Club, County of Roscommon, asking that they be recognized as a nonprofit Roscommon County Organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses be considered for approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Commissioner Melvin, seconded by Commissioner Russo to uh adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash two dash one for Local Governing Body Resolution Charity Gaming License for Sky High Booster Club. Any further comments from any commissioner at this time, please? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Motion number two, please.
Move to authorize Aaron Palmerton to purchase two years of service credit in Division seven-two-zero-one dash zero-two of Roscommon County's Merz Defined Benefit Plan in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars. Employee will fund the Merz Calculated Assumption Purchase at one hundred percent, including any monetary difference between Merz Assumption and Actuarial Experience Bill to the county for the purchase.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to authorize Aaron Palmerton to purchase two years of service credit to Merz in the Roscommon County Defined Benefit Program. Any further questions from any commissioner at this time or comments? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Alvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Item number fourteen, committee reports, please.
I can start.
Hey, Mr. Russo.
I attended the housing meeting. A special meeting for the district for Home Lake Claims and Accounts and Agenda.
Okay. Mr. Muckenthaler.
I, on the fourth day, we had the special meeting at ten o'clock, and I had Claims and Accounts.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Melvin.
On the twenty-eighth, I attended the Michigan Board of Directors Meeting uh for Roscommon County. Remember, they filled twenty-eight job openings. Our unemployment rate for December, nine point three percent, the highest in the uh, it was reported that uh Roscommon Commission on Aging got twenty-one thousand dollar training grant and Lear Corporation got seventy-four thousand dollar training. Also, we reported that uh Lear Corporation is going to be shutting down the line permanently. That's gonna be fifty to sixty thousand slots. Also, there's going to be an eight-week layoff starting March first of a hundred and thirty employees. Hopefully, that's only gonna copy hour. This Board of Directors. I have a new program that's gonna start this year. It's going to be learning to ride a horse or care for a horse. If you don't want to ride, you can go over there and you can groom a horse. This is gonna be over Maple Valley. I have an office. Also, um bowling program at the Dart Lane. So we won't be able to operate any more of that program this year. Another bowling alley.
There's one right here in Roscommon, isn't there?
Uh, well, I don't know if the bowling alley's open at this point. They had to agree to participate. I attended the special meeting on Friday and then
Oh, I've questioned in regards to the employment. Uh, has Myers filled all their positions down there through Michigan Works?
Take over the entire Michigan Works Office Complex in Westbridge. Two months. Need to fill like two hundred.
I heard three fifty. So, but, so there's jobs out there, so.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just wonder where they're at with that, and I think they're still on target to open in May, I believe. So. Um, as far as my report, um number one, Health Department on the twenty-sixth, um, they had uh nominations for for uh chairman again. And I was the only one elected, so nobody opposed me, doggone it. That's beside the point. I can do it, so, all right? Um, at the EDC meeting on January twenty-seventh, we moved the, the site of the EDC has been moved to the core offices up on the hill. Um. Bigger, bigger place. It was very comfortable. Um. We are up to, and we will after Richard Castle, if we approve him next meeting, we'll be up to fourteen people out of fifteen people, so we're gonna have a full board. We got, I think we got a number of people that ran arrested in that last position too. So, um, shout out to Sean and and Cor for uh and Rock for letting us use the offices. It was very, very well done, and we can zoom and do everything, so it worked out very well. Um. Then again, and then I was also back down to Mount Pleasant to the Health Department and did Claims and Accounts on February third. Um. No, fourth, excuse, no, I did that on, right, on February third. The special meeting was on February fourth. And then this past Monday, we here in Roscommon are hosting the Northern Michigan Commissioners Association Meetings now. Uh, we had twenty-six counties between, I think there, um twenty-six counties attend that meeting. I think we had thirty people here in person, didn't we? And I understand on Zoom, we had forty-some people out there in Zoom. Um, they talked about this mental health thing that's going on, and we, we were able to bring the House Majority, mean, person from the Senate, Mike Shirkey was on and presented his side of it because he's sponsoring that bill, and it is, the controversy is, is going from private or no, from public to private, so um that's the big controversy at this time. It was very civil. Um, there's a lot of commissioners there that probably don't look, um side with Senator Shirkey on this. Uh, Joni Blamer was there from Mental Health to represent us, and then there was another lady there from another mental health also were present here physically and had some very good questions and some comments. And they were all heard. Um. The next meeting for the Northern Michigan Commissioners will be in April, and at that time, there's another bill out there. I'm not sure if it's a senator or if it's a representative, and they're gonna be on Zoom to present their side of it, so there's nothing coming so far. We, as a commission in Roscommon County, have done a resolution to be opposed to this thing, so. Um, and we already did that along with a number of other other places, so. But anyway, it was, I think it was nicely received. Everybody seemed to be comfortable and, uh it was good to have a lot of people in person again, so. And I'll just go on one other thing because I was gonna do, do it later under, after public comment, but I'll do it now. As far as our maintenance position, um, if you guys get a good, get a chance, go down and thank Doug Shy, who's been our number two man, and he's been there for what, last two months? Yep, basically the last two months keeping things going. He's done a fantastic job, so if you can, if you want to reach out to him and thank him, I should, we should appreciate it, okay? All right? That's all I got on our committee reports. Anybody else got anything to add? Okay, item fifteen, public comment. Brian.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for
Turn, turn that. There you go.
It says push. That's so convenient. My, uh, my wife says I don't listen to directions well, so thanks for keeping that clear for me. Um, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here this morning and speak in under public comment. Um, like Chairman Schneider, Schneider mentioned, my name is Brian Harrison. I, I work with Adviser Care Home Health and Hospice. We're a home care company that works across the state of Michigan and including serving some of the residents here in Roscommon County. Um, we do work with Medicare, Medicaid, VA, Work Comp, and also individuals who've been impacted in auto insurance accidents or auto accidents. Uh, my reason for being here today um is, is for one, I mixed up my own schedule, so my apologies for that, but thank you for still letting me speak publicly. Um, is to draw some awareness to some of the challenges we, as a home healthcare company, and, and not just us, but our industry is facing with the recent two thousand nineteen Auto Insurance Reform Act. I do want to be perfectly clear, uh, we do support many of the reforms that were put in place in two thousand nineteen. Uh, things like drivers choosing their own coverage limits, um, the process now of utilization review, which is something that all insurance companies in the health sector um work through and manage to best identify which treatments are necessary for clients and patients. Um. As, as well as even um a restriction or a cap for family provided care and ensuring that that's done appropriately. Uh, one of the things that we believe was, was not intentionally done but missed uh from a legislative perspective was a fifty-five or forty-five percent reduction um in the reimbursement for home healthcare that Medicare does not cover. So what we do, very similar to the Medicaid program through the county and working with individuals who might need hourly care and support, um, auto insurance accident victims oftentimes will will require someone to be in attendance or personally with them, one-on-one at home to support their ability to care for themselves in going to the bathroom, getting something to eat, bathing, dressing themselves. Without this one-on-one support, those individuals more than likely would need to be in a facility or not able to continue to care and live at home. So again, one of the things that the legislation did, was again, took our bill rate, which we'd bill across any insurance company for that service, whether it be VA or Work Comp, it was all at the same rate. On average, it was about thirty dollars an hour. And so now we're seeing that forty-five percent reduction, our reimbursements are down to sixteen dollars and fifty cents, which as, as many of you know, and hearing even the plethora of jobs available in Roscommon County, it is very difficult and will be, continue to be difficult for us as an organization to employ folks for much less than eighteen, nineteen dollars an hour to do that work. And so we are, as an organization, upside down financially every hour that we send in a care provider at this point. We have been working faithfully with the state legislature almost for the last year now in working to move something along and, and draw some awareness to this challenge. But we do hope, as we've continued to diversify our, our reach and drawing awareness, it's certainly something that unless you know someone, maybe that's impacted, it's not always something that's on the forefront of, of individuals' minds. And so part of our push over the last several months has been going to several counties in which we serve and drawing this awareness in. Again, our, our hope is to not undo the changes, but to simply ensure that families and patients who've been receiving home healthcare or now are choosing unlimited PIP coverage as a part of their auto insurance policy have the resources available to them, should they in fact have a need to use those services. So I, I, I'm looking forward to again, meeting with you all at the end of the month as a part of the work group and, and ideally would love the board to pass a resolution again, urging the state to address this and act on this, or not asking necessarily the board to take a stance in terms of which bill to support or not support, but, but certainly encouraging our state reps and, and those individuals in those positions to, to look closely at this and hopefully do it quickly. We as, as an organization again are running, running out of, of time to continue to serve these individuals, given the, the financial challenges that we are now facing. I appreciate the, the few minutes and, and again, look forward to working with you all on the, the twenty-third.
Okay, we'll see you then. They'll be at nine o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. It's all right, I, I seen your hand.
All right, I just wanted to, you know, yesterday was the filing deadline for proposals for May election and we had none, so we do not have a May election in Roscommon County. Okay, but so now that means we can turn our focus to August, on the August primary and I will be working in the next couple of weeks to get something over to Cheryl at the Resorder as to what positions are going to be available on the ballot this year. And candidate filing deadlines for August are April nineteenth. I'm not, right off the top of my head, sure what the filing deadlines are for proposals. It's usually in May, the first or second Tuesday in May, I'm not entirely sure, but precinct delegate filings are also going to be due. I think that's like early May as well. So I will be getting some information put together to get out there to the public so that everyone knows. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I have a question for you, Michelle, as far as the filing deadline. The one change is, is that it used to be if you didn't get signatures, you could pay a hundred dollars. Now, if that, if I'm not mistaken, that's been changed, that money is not refundable anymore, is that correct?
That is correct. Candidates can, certain individuals can pay a hundred dollar filing fee in lieu of submitting petitions with signatures. And in the past, depending on the position, if you want placed first or second in your primary, you would have that one hundred dollars refunded to you. That is no longer the case. Now it is a non-refundable one hundred dollar filing fee regardless of what positions are eligible to pay that, or they can do petitions.
Right, and that money goes to the general fund?
Correct. For now.
For now.
They are looking at legislation to try to delegate it specifically for voting equipment and such. In our county, we don't have that many realistically that is going to, whole heck of a lot to help us if we get to put that, but I guess every little bit. Right, I can buy a flash drive. Or two, but that's, that's correct.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, that can go in your article, right? You either grab signatures or you can, which signatures aren't that many anymore. They've been reduced over the years.
Well, yeah, okay, we'll go with that.
Yep, okay, all right, okay. Any other public comment at this time, please? Any other public comment out there in Zoom land? Andy's shaking his head no and I'm seeing nothing, so at this point, I will entertain a motion for adjournment, please. Motion made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Mukentaller. That's a new one. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.